A couple of announcements before we move on. I think I mentioned this last month, but we are currently seeking an honorary student board member to serve this year, this school year. So anybody who knows a junior or senior that would be a candidate for student board membership, please encourage them to apply before October 1st. You can find information regarding this opportunity on the CPS board website. Secondly, as usual, if you're interested in scheduling time with a board member, we continue to provide office hours and if you'd call the board office at (773) 553-1600, we would be pleased to arrange an opportunity to meet with board members one-on-one. With that, Madam Secretary, would you please share the details for the next board meeting?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next board meeting will be held on October 22nd, 2014. Due to the Columbus Day holiday on Monday, October 13th, 2014, advanced registration will open at 8:00 a.m. on Tuesday, October 14th, and be extended to Monday, October 20th at 5:00 p.m. or until all slots are filled, whichever is first. If anyone has any questions about this process, please contact the board office for our assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will now proceed with today's public participation session. And I note, Madam Secretary, that Alderman Spazato is with us today and I think he's joining representatives from the Dever School and so I think we should give him preference to start the process.
Thank you, Mr. President. Alderman Spazato, please, with speaker number 17, Rita Ortiz.
Thank you, President Vatali, and members of the board. Thanks for this opportunity to come out and speak to you guys again. As you know, we have a little bit of an overcrowding problem on the northwest side, so we're here to reach out for some help. I'm here with one of my many awesome principals, Rita Ortiz, from Dever School. So we're just here to plead our case to you. While being respective of the two-minute rule, Principal Ortiz is going to start off with what she put together, and then when her two minutes is up, I will finish off what we have to say. So if that's okay, we would greatly appreciate it. So with no further ado, my awesome principal, Rita Ortiz.
Good morning. I'm Rita Ortiz, Principal of Dever School. The Chicago Public Schools fiscal year 2014 capital budget included overcrowding relief as one of its five guiding principles. The summary acknowledged that there are schools in the district that have too many students for the space available. The five-year plan is to address the need to relieve overcapacity through annual investments in new annexes. The major initiative of overcrowding relief specifically addressed overcrowding at Dever School. A construction project with the purpose of providing relief for overcrowding was completed in August 2013. The scope included removing 290 fixed auditorium seats to create a multipurpose area with a capacity of 214, relocating the library and computer lab to shared space, and removing or adding walls to adjust classroom size. The project reconfigured existing space but did not expand the building footprint. The ideal program enrollment of 630 and actual enrollment of 844 give Dever a space utilization index of 34 percent with a designation of overcrowded. The Dever community is vibrant. Teachers, students, and families work together and base every decision on what is best for our students. Core instruction includes exposure to three fine arts disciplines, daily health and physical education, and a variety of extracurricular opportunities. Without dedicated workspace, the music and art teacher wheel carts from room to room. For three hours a day, dance is taught in the multipurpose room. The remainder of the time, the dance teacher travels to classroom so that lunch can be served in the multipurpose space. Double classes are held in the single gym. We operate on the concept of shared space with teachers moving in or out to accommodate each other. Class size is growing and every room is utilized. The FY15 enrollment report shows the current enrollment surpassing the projected enrollment. The FY15 forecast, based on the FY14 trend, continues to rise. I believe that Pillar Three is at the center of the CPS action plan for a reason. Engaging and empowering families and community is crucial to our students' success. Dever families are supportive, proactive, and involved. Our local school council, bilingual advisory committee, and PTA work tirelessly to advocate for all Dever children and staff. Our overcrowding prevents these groups from meeting at Dever during the school day. There isn't one open space for parents and community members to gather. One day last week, the PTA meeting was held on the front steps of the school. In 2008, our community had a glimmer of hope that we would receive an expansion to our building. The city of Chicago sought the land located on the corner of Olicott and Cornelia for the construction of a new branch library. That land was our only green space, and well before recess was introduced, we used that land as a play area and soccer field. To gain support for library construction, community meetings were held and a publication was distributed that included an aerial view of our property. Drawing details included a relocated playground and the location of Dever's potential school expansion. On October 28th, 2008, the board approved conveyance of the land by the Public Building Commission to the city of Chicago. The Dunning Library was built, but the potential Dever school expansion remained a drawing on a piece of paper. Daily recess was introduced in 2012. Our students now play on a partially fenced asphalt surface next to the four-room mobile. November 2013, Mr. Vatali visited Dever, and you asked us what we needed. My answer then, and my answer now, is that we need a relief to our overcrowding. Please assist me by facilitating a meeting with someone with whom we can have a discussion so that we can plan accordingly for future years and assure the continued success at Dever School. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share this information.
I told you she was awesome. So just again, just want to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to speak. Awesome principal, awesome staff over there, awesome parents. I mean, everything's awesome, other than the amount of room we have. So we need some help with our problem with the room, and I know it's a big problem on the northwest side, all over the place. So we appreciate any consideration you can give us to help in the future and look forward to, you know, putting together a meeting with the principal, whatever, whoever we need to talk to, myself. So thank you very much for your time and have a great day, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman and Principal Ortiz, for coming down and making your case. As you've mentioned, I've spent a lot of time in that, out in your ward and in that area looking at the overcrowding so that we can make intelligent decisions. You know, the board has made this overcrowding issue a reasonably important priority within the limited resources we have, and we are trying to address it as aggressively as we can. We've made some progress this year. Making your case helps everybody understand the challenges that we face, and we appreciate your coming and telling us about it, and we will continue to work to find solutions for schools like yours. And I'm sure that Pat and Tim would be more than happy to get the details of what I saw so that, in fact, we can factor it into our planning processes this year. Talked to Tim Collier, I'm sure Tim will reach out to you along with Pat Taylor, and we really do, we really are trying to prioritize resources to solve this problem. We made some progress this year, but as you know, resources are limited, but you making your case helps us understand the priorities. So thanks for coming and we'll work at it as hard as we know how.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, I think I saw Clarice Berry here, head of the Principal's Association.
Yes, Mr. President.
Welcome, Clarice.
Yes, Ms. Clarice Berry, please, from the Chicago Principals Association.
Good morning to President Vatali, board members, CPS staff. I am here today to say that the principals that I represent in the Chicago Public Schools neither want, need, nor have confidence in the newly assigned custodial vendors selected by CPS. The problems with the vendors, Aramark, and Sedexol Magic have been clearly articulated in nearly every media outlet in this city. Over two years ago, at the beginning of this transition, starting with the stripping of the Chicago principals of the supervisory authority to direct and evaluate the school engineers and by extension, the custodial staff, we conducted an extensive survey of CPS principals. Overwhelmingly, the principals were dissatisfied and requested CPS to follow the Illinois School Code, restoring supervision of all staff to the principals. Copies of that survey were given to senior staff, resulting in a tumultuous meeting with myself, your general counsel, Joe Moriarty was there, the engineers were there with their chief, their attorney, I was there. At the end of that meeting, the wishes of the principals, the school engineers, and the adherents to the Illinois School Code were ignored. On the heels of that meeting, vendors were chosen, contracts were signed. It would surprise no one here to know that we were not consulted. I questioned repeatedly how this was done in violation of the Illinois School Code without discussion with the principals. I had to appeal to CEO Bennett to direct your senior staff person, the architect of this train wreck, to provide us with the then-secret list of his focus group. I was given that list, excuse me, and those persons on that focus group, who reportedly gave their blessing to the stripping of direct principal's supervisory authority of all school custodial staff, was the basis of the beginning of this disaster. By the way, that focus group consisted of eight principals. We met Monday with Tom Tyrell, Adam Anderson, a representative of Aramark but without a Sedexol Magic representative who needed to be there to explain the reported problems with their services to the school. We requested a two-week follow-up on the service improvements promised at that meeting. However, the core, bottom-line issue at hand is the loss of principal control to supervise and evaluate all staff assigned to his or her school. We do not need, we do not want, middle managers between the principals and the staff assigned to their schools. Mahalia and Carlos, you were with me in the trenches when we went down to Springfield and got the Illinois School Code changed. Why are we fighting this battle again? I want to be emphatic about this next last statement. No principal, teacher, paraprofessional, or student should be made to supervise, teach, provide services, or learn in a dirty school.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our first speaker for public participation will be speaker number one, Carolyn Bellicki, followed by speaker number two, Jennifer Biggs, and then speaker number three, please, Noreen Gutencast. Last call for Carolyn Bellicki. Last call for Jennifer Biggs.
Sorry, wasn't expecting to be up here so fast today. Hi, my name is Jenny Biggs. I handed in a raise-your-hand custodian survey, results to the survey to you this morning, but I'm here today as a parent rep on the Sheridan LSC where my three children go to school. We have many concerns with the Aramark contract and how it is impacting our school and school system-wide. Parents and staff are worried about school safety and security. Who is in our building, especially after the school day is over? Many times, our principal is given one name of who to expect and someone else shows. After these occurrences, Aramark themselves can't tell him who was there or why the change occurred. What background testing is done by Aramark for its employees and contracted employees? How are keys to buildings controlled and accounted for once a school must hand them over to an Aramark employee? It is not safe for our kids and our staff to have rotating custodians, and it is certainly not safe to not know who is in our building at all times. Custodians are an added layer of security at all schools. Shifting them around, sharing them among schools, and laying them off decreases safety and security system-wide. Our principal is spending an enormous amount of time dealing with Aramark. We are on our second Aramark rep, who is temporary. We will be on number three soon. We get conflicting information on how many night custodians we should have or will have in the future. What exactly is the substitute protocol? How come we can't get straight answers on who will be coming into our school and when? And what happens when no one shows up the night before? When does the deep cleaning happen then? Of course, parents and staff are very concerned about the drop in cleanliness and the potential health concerns because of this. Here's a quote from a primary teacher at our school. "On Friday afternoon, September 12th, at 2:20, I had a student vomit all over my rug. I immediately called the office to request a cleanup. No one showed up in my room until 2:50, so for half an hour, that sat and soaked in my rug. Then I come back to school on Monday morning and there is still dried-up vomit on my rug."
Ms. Biggs?
There was also a book, ah, yes, I will finish, thank you.
Thank you.
"There was also a book left on my rug that was covered in vomit that was never thrown away." And a quote from a fellow parent, then I am done. "How does CPS expect our kids to have good attendance if they don't rid the school of the germs that fester after a bout of a stomach incident? That is a school-wide outbreak waiting to happen." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Biggs. Our next speaker, please, Noreen Gutencast, followed by speaker number four, Margarita Vasquez, and then speaker number five, please, Michael Nash, and then speaker number six, Arnold Steiber.
Good morning, board. This is a new school year, and we have new funding challenges. I hear from teachers in schools all the time, and these are some of the things I'm hearing this year. Classrooms and bathrooms are dirty because we have a bargain basement cleaning contractor. Kindergarten classes are oversized and there are no teacher assistants in them. Students with IEPs are not getting the educational support and the minutes that they are entitled to. Experienced veteran teachers can't find work because they're too expensive. Two hundred schools have no libraries. Class size is creeping up because of per pupil funding. And parents are clamoring for a lot of things, including additional full-day preschool spots, because despite Mayor Emanuel's claims that preschool for all is going to be implemented in Chicago, there are over 150,000 children, birth through age four, who don't have access to public full-day early learning and care. CPS has lost $79 million in early childhood block grant funding and an additional $5 million in federal Head Start grant dollars. And the money that the mayor is giving CPS, the $36 million over three years, is not going to be able to fund this universal access. With new centralized application procedures for preschool, the number of children enrolled in preschool for all in Chicago decreased last year and is projected to be even 1,000 fewer slots for three- and four-year-olds. Children across the city can't find access to slots in their community, and there are 45 percent of our traditional elementary schools that don't offer preschool for all. You, as the board, have a responsibility to the parents of Chicago schoolchildren, to find the funding to give a world-class education to our 400,000 students and to expand educational access to young children, three- and four-year-olds.
Ms. Gutencast, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Delighted.
Thank you.
For years, we have urged you to seek to renegotiate interest rate swaps with a number of banks, including Bank of America and Loop Capital. We believe that banks may have fraudulently sold these agreements to CPS by failing to disclose the potential risks. You have the opportunity, right now, to recover tens of millions of dollars for Chicago's students.
Thank you.
I urge you to immediately file for arbitration under the Financial Industry Regulatory Authority.
Thank you, Ms. Gutencast. Our next speaker, please. Speaker number four, Margarita Vasquez.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Margarita Vasquez y vengo de la Hanson Park. Sabemos que ustedes se reunieron con el director y que habaron sobre el anexo que estamos pidiendo para nuestra escuela. Nos dijeron que no hay fondos, pero la necesidad de nuestra escuela es muy grande. No, este, sin embargo, estamos aquí para pedirles que tomen en cuenta...
Excuse me, can you get your mic closer so I can... Are you gonna interpret as you go along?
Que tomen en cuenta la urgencia que tenemos para nuestro anexo, en nuestra escuela. El Brain está en unas malas condiciones y nuestros niños no pueden estar tomando clases así.
So, good morning. My name is Margarita Vasquez and I'm from Hanson Park Elementary. We know that President Vatali met with our principal and talked about the needs for an annex in our school. And, you know, we were told that, you know, unfortunately, there are no funds, but we are here to, again, but we are here to request again, you know, and, you know, put the urgency that our students have, you know, in terms of having an annex.
Sabemos que hicieron unos pequeños arreglos, pero no ha sido suficiente. El sistema de electricidad no está funcionando para los aires acondicionados. Eso está muy caliente para los niños. A la conexión de la calefacción que ya va a empezar hoy en el invierno, eso no la podemos arreglar. Está suficiente caliente también. Es lo mismo, invierno y verano está demasiado caliente. Los maestros tienen que abrir puertas y ventanas para que entre un poquito de aire frío porque eso se pone demasiado caliente.
So, we know that some minor fixes have been done over the summer, but that has not been enough. You know, today, we still have a faulty electrical system that cannot handle air conditioners. Now that the winter's starting, we don't, our heating system doesn't have thermostats. They cannot adjust the temperature in rooms. You know, during the winter, it gets really hot where, you know, teachers have to open the windows in the middle of winter so that some cool air can go into the rooms.
Ms. Vasquez, excuse me, can you please conclude?
También tenemos, decirles que nuestro contrato que tiene la escuela del Brain se vence el año que viene, en junio, y yo creo que no podemos esperar diez años más para que nuestros niños sigan estudiando ahí. Ahorita la escuela de tercer año subió, digo, de tercer lugar subió al primer lugar, y yo creo que para mantenerlos así en primer lugar, necesitamos que los niños tengan un buen lugar para estudiar, tanto ellos como los maestros.
So, our lease, so the lease for our branch is gonna expire on June of next year, and we don't want to wait another 10 years, or we don't want to, you know, be there, have that branch for another, that branch for another 10 years. So the school has gone on from Level Three to Level One, and in order for the school to maintain a Level One status, you know, the students need, you know, adequate facilities.
So, thank you. Would you tell them, Ms. Vasquez, that I actually have a meeting scheduled with a group of parents and school leaders at Hanson School sometime in the next three or four weeks where we can talk about this further? I'll be out at the school to meet with them, and it's already scheduled.
Do you know the date?
I'm sorry, I don't, but...
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Okay, muchas gracias por escucharnos.
Thank you.
Michael Nash, last call for Michael Nash. Moving on to the next speaker, please, Arnold Steiber, last call. Moving on to the next speaker, speaker number seven, Maricela Tello, followed by speaker number 10, Darlene Williams, speaker number 11, Saqib Bati. Ms. Tello, please.
Mi nombre es Merced Aldai, y soy madre de dos hijos, y estoy aquí para hablar sobre la necesidad de aumentar el tiempo para los niños de preschool, porque dos horas no son suficientes para tener una educación de calidad. Ellos llegan a la escuela, nada más les da tiempo de poner su nombre, y alguna merienda dibujan, y es todo el tiempo que les da para hacer algo, no les da tiempo para más. Es importante aumentar el tiempo de preescolar para que nosotras las madres podamos, este, que nos dé tiempo de estudiar o trabajar, porque en dos horas vamos, los dejamos, y luego otra vez tenemos que regresar por ellos, y no es suficiente tiempo, gracias.
Hi, I'm a mother of two children, and I'm here to talk about the necessity of, to increase the time for the preschool students, because two hours are not enough to have a quality education. They go to school, just, they have enough time to write down their name, eat a cookie, and draw, and that is all that they're doing. There's not enough to do other things. It is very important to increase the preschool time because this will give us enough time for mothers to go to work and go to school, because they just drop off their children and then they have to, two hours and a half later, they have to go and pick up their children. Thank you.
¿Cuál escuela preescolar asiste a su hijo?
Volta.
I'm sorry?
Volta.
Our next speaker, please. Speaker number 10, Darlene Williams, last call. Moving on to speaker number 11, please, Saqib Bati, followed by speaker number 12, Deborah Gardner, and then speaker 13, Gloria Munoz, and speaker 14, Robert Lamont, please.
Hi, my name is Saqib Bati. I'm a proud CPS grad and I'm the director of the Refund America Project at the Roosevelt Institute, which is an economic policy think tank.
Excuse me, could you introduce yourself again into the microphone? I'm having a lot of trouble hearing you.
It's better? Great. My name is Saqib Bati. I'm a proud CPS grad and the director of the Refund America Project at the Roosevelt Institute, which is an economic policy think tank. I'm here today to talk about CPS's interest rate swap deals. Under a federal regulation called MSRB Rule G17, the banks that pitched swap deals had an obligation to deal fairly with cities, states, and school districts. This means that the banks had to make sure the public officials understood the risk they were taking on, and they could not misrepresent or downplay those risks. The standard of fair dealing was typically not met in most swap transactions that took place, and we have strong reason to believe that a lot of these deals could have violated federal law. The standard picture on swaps emphasized all the potential benefits but minimized the risk. In many cases, the projections of the potential benefits were based on the ridiculous assumption that none of the risk would ever materialize. Of course, that's not what happened. When the banks crashed the financial system in 2008 and our economy along with it, the Federal Reserve was forced to slash interest rates to keep the economy on life support. When that happened, many of these risks materialized. The net payments on the swap skyrocketed. CPS now pays $36 million a year on its swap deals. Over the life of the deals, we paid nearly $240 million to Wall Street, and based on the district's own financial calculations and financial statements, we're on the hook for another $200 million in future payments. But there's something we can do about it. CPS could file for arbitration with the Financial Industry Regulatory Authority, or FINRA, to potentially get back this $440 million on the grounds that the banks did not deal fairly with the district.
Mr. Bati, excuse me, can you please conclude?
I urge you to move on this immediately because the eligibility period for these claims could run out as early as next month. To do this, you simply have to go to the FINRA website and file up a form online. I've submitted a statement that has been handed out to you. Please review that for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Speaker number 12, Deborah Gardner.
Good morning. My name is Deborah Gardner. My son graduated from Calhoun-Holland in June of 2014. He is now a freshman at Irving Prep High School, doing very well. I also have a granddaughter who is in kindergarten this year. I moved to Chicago and was very unhappy with the school my son was attending. He was not learning, which was anything, not well doing, good in his grade. I choose Calhoun's before he was learning nothing at the other school, because I had a nephew who was a student. He approved very high attendance at Calhoun-Holland because his grades was very well. I visit Calhoun's. I visit Calhoun's and I was very impressed with Calhoun's when I visited. So as, from there, my son started going to Calhoun's. The teachers was very knowledgeable. They showed very support when I went up into the school. After that, my son became a student. His grades improved. He became an honor roll. This is because of the tutoring at Calhoun-Holland, the Boys and Girls Club that they had. They had things to get the kids off the streets. Not only that, they had stuff for the parents to do. We have a program going on with waking up with Ms. Myers every morning. And the name of our program is "Varying by Parents." So with that, I'm saying of the principal of Holland-Calhoun's, Ms. Burrell, she's very intelligent. She's there to make sure that the children's in cheese and what they have to do.
Ms. Gardner, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And in Calhoun is a great school. The staff is very important and concerned about the well-being of our kids. I believe in Calhoun-Holland School and you should too.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Speaker number 13, Gloria Munoz.
Good morning. My name is Gloria Munoz. My parents wanted their children to have opportunities they did not have. Imagine having to walk to three miles to school every morning, then not being able to further your studies because you cannot afford to pay for your daily bus ticket, tuition or books. This was my mother's life and my father's life was not much different. Both of my parents have a sixth grade education. And so explains the incessant reminders to go to school, do our homework and get good grades. My parents instilled in us the desire to go to college, but a desire is not enough. My mother's wishes were granted when my oldest sister was admitted to Noble. Seeing the success of my sister and the culture of family and high expectations, my mom made the final decision that all six of her children would attend Noble. We thank her for that choice she made 14 years ago. We have all graduated from or are currently attending Noble. Noble not only provided us with an excellent education, they completed, completely guided my family during the entire college admissions process and provided assistance while we were in college. My sister Maria, Posse Scholarship recipient, University of Wisconsin-Madison. My brother Hugo, a Gates Millennium Scholar, University of Miami. My younger brother Sergio, University of Illinois at Chicago. My youngest brother Alejandro, IIT. My younger sister Juana is currently a freshman at Noble, future student at Yale. She already knows. As for myself, Gloria Munoz, a proud 2013 graduate from Stanford University. Thank you. I believe each child deserves a high-quality option. Their parents' education, income or neighborhood should not determine their future. They deserve an education that creates endless possibilities. And that's why I decided to come back to Noble. I stand before you as a resident teacher through the Relay Graduate School of Education. I came back because I want to provide students with the same high-quality education and love that I enjoyed. Noble has proved it is possible for the past 15 years. Thank you to the educators and decision-makers that believed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Munoz. Our next speaker, please. Speaker number 14, Robert Lamont, followed by speaker number 15, Jackson Potter, and then speaker 16, Yvonne McGinnis.
Good morning. My name is Robert Lamont. I'm a member of the Veterans for Peace. And I ask that you fight violence and demilitarize the Chicago Public Schools and include conflict resolution in its place. The military solution to conflict is violence. Rifles, drones, bullets, bombs. The conflict resolution solution to conflicts is nonviolent decision-making. Talking, listening, learning, respecting, communicating. Children learn what they're taught and will do that behavior later in life. When they're taught to hit, they will hit. When they're taught to fight, they will. Witness child soldiers in another continent. Do not even pretend military with the children. I've included in your packet contact information for our organization and what the Cardinal has said about serving the poor, the new Cardinal, and three published examples of physical attacks by athletes, two by male football players and one by a woman soccer player. You know in your own experience that some people behave badly. Forcing them to conform, which is the military model and goal, may have short-term results but long-term, the path of concern, listening and participation has deeper results. The brains of children haven't developed yet. Adults, you should make this decision. Mayor Richard M. Daley visited Paris, France and saw bicycles for rent. Chicago now has the beginning of a city of bicycles. You, one person, can make a difference. Be that adult person and bring widespread conflict resolution, not military violence to children.
Mr. Lamont, excuse me, can you?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
In your packet, you also have the contact information.
Thank you, Mr. Lamont. Our next speaker, please. Jackson Potter.
Good morning. I believe you all should have a letter from me. If not, I have extra copies up here. Okay. Jackson Potter with the Chicago Teachers Union. While the mayor trots around celebrating Jackie Robinson's historic victory, his school budget has cut all funding for assistant baseball coaches. We have these devastating cuts, almost no librarians, you've heard of overcrowding, lack of universal pre-K. We had the very traumatic school closings purportedly because of budget restraint. Thirty million to safe passages up to date to mitigate the harmful effects of that decision. But it doesn't have to be this way. We don't have to choose between art and PE, computers versus English. You have a historic and time-sensitive opportunity and a chance to prove that despite being appointed, despite President Vitale's association with banks, although it's a good bank relatively speaking, although that's an oxymoron. Thank you for considering this opportunity to defend the interests of children instead of those of financial actors who have betrayed our trust. Since '08, when banks crashed the economy, CPS is on the hook for over $230 million. If we retrieve that money through the process described by Saqib, that's up to 3,000 people that can go back into our schools to teach, to provide support. There is a way. You just have to press a button. It's $1,800 to file these papers. In Baldwin County, Alabama, they retrieved every cent of the deceptive transactions in the swaps that the banks provided as a result of lack of transparency.
Mr. Potter, excuse me, can you please conclude?
But we now know the risks and that we, those were not properly disclosed. This is a rate of return, if we get that money back, of 24 million percent. You gotta do it. There's nothing more important for you to discuss today than retrieving this money. You know, Tim and I have argued about this. He's defended the banks. This is a slightly different version of what we've been saying because it's worked. It's been a way to retrieve money that was improperly taken.
Thank you, Mr. Potter.
So let's debate it. Saqib Bati, he's a municipal finance expert.
Thank you.
Bring Tim up. Let him talk today. You have time. You have half the attendance of a normal board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Potter.
I think the mayor actually announced last week that he was asking legal counsel to look into this, so it's actually being pursued. He, he announced it, that he's looking into it. So we're looking at it. You have to prove fraud. You can't, I don't know what evidence you have that the banks defrauded, but, you know, you could file a case. Doesn't mean you're gonna win. So if there's evidence of fraud that you're aware of, you should let us know what that is.
Yeah, I mean, Saqib Bati can walk you through what these agreements look like in the fine print. He's looked at them all. He can tell you where the bodies are buried. So the mayor may say he's looking into it, that, you don't, you don't have to wait for him. You don't. You defend the interests of children.
Thank you.
You are the stewards of this district. You're not beholden to him letting this lapse. You only have about half a month. And then that's it.
Look forward to seeing the evidence of fraud that you have.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Yvonne McGinnis.
I mean, why not have this debate right here right now? Make this meeting meaningful. Don't sit on it.
Ms. McGinnis.
Good morning, Mr. President, board members. My name is Yvonne McGinnis and I'm with We're Cleaning. And I'm here for a second time to ask for justice. Every week I send all of you invoices that the, that you owe me, $89,000. And I get no response for any, from any of you. On July 17th, Mr. Kuma had my records and he did a survey, analysis on my records. He said, "Give him two weeks." It has been two months and I haven't heard a word. Where's my $89,000? On March 7, 2014, Mr. Gary Jenkins got the information to do a survey analysis of why I haven't been paid. On October 23rd, Mr. Sebastian got the same information to do analysis of why I haven't been paid. In 2012 May, I asked Mr. Vitale why I hadn't been paid. He gave me Mr. William Morgan. All of these people disappear once they do an analysis on my, on why I haven't been paid. All the records are here. I send them to you every week. There's no question about a contract says $130,000, you paid me $99,000. There's no question, what happened to my money? Where's the justice that I have to come here again and ask you to pay me? Where's the justice in my not being paid? I did the service. The board has a right, I have a right to be paid. Why have I not been paid? I can't get paid. I can't work with Airmark. They won't give me any work. I do landscaping, I can't get into landscaping. All I can conclude from not being paid, not having any work, and I've been in business over 30 years.
Ms. McGinnis.
I offered my service too.
Ms. McGinnis.
I got you.
Thank you.
Okay? All I can conclude is that there's a hate crime against me and my company. I believe it in my heart that there's a hate crime, why I can't get paid and why I can't get into work. I'm just, I do the best job that I can.
Thank you, Ms. McGinnis.
I am 70 years old and I've never been paid a penny for some work that I did not do. I get paid for what I do. I want to be paid.
Thank you, Ms. McGinnis. Our next speaker, please. Speaker number 18, Fidelis Nunez, followed by speaker number 19, Maisha Shields. Speaker number 20, Martin Ritter.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Maravigo in our language. And thank you for allowing the opportunity to bring to your attention an important issue for my community and its development and contribution to the city of Chicago and state of Illinois. We are members of the city's growing Garifuna American Immigration Population, descendants of the central Caribbean coast of Guatemala, Belize, Honduras and Nicaragua. Members of our community have resided in cities since 1960s. Guaranagu are descendants of the native Caribbean Indians, also known as the Yellow Caribbean, Arawak Indians and Shipwrecked Africans who are being brought to the Caribbean to be used as slaves from the island of St. Vincent and the Grenadiens. The intermingled cultures became the Black Caribs and are now as the Guaranagu, plural, Garifuna singular. This is the group of people who fought for the land and birthright, unlike the United States defeated the British for sovereignty. Unfortunately, during the Caribbean wars in 1790s, our people, this Guaranagu, were defeated. In 1795, after the assassination of our department chief, Chatoyé, our ancestor was exiled to the island of Bali Sau, which is located off the coast of the island of St. Vincent. Furthermore, amid starvation and death because of the barren land where plants and fruits could not grow, our people were rounded up and exiled to British colony of Rutan, island off the coast of Honduras, arriving on April 12, 1797. They survived on cassava bread made from the yuca root and dried fish. In November 2011, Governor Pat Quinn issued a proclamation to declare the month of November as Garifuna American Heritage Month in the state of Illinois, joining mayors and governors across the country that are recognizing, recognizing the presence of Guaranagu in specific states and their contributions to the progress and development of society. We are here today to ask the board not only to sponsor but also to promote the month of November as Garifuna American Heritage Month in Chicago's public school system. This is an estimated 60,000 Guaranagu in the area, over 75,000 in the Midwest region. In addition to seeking the board's support and partnership to promote and preserve Garifuna American Heritage Month, we are also seeking the board's recommendation to be part of the Board of Education Diversity Task Force and allow members of the community to make recommendations as to how Garifuna culture can keep children from the streets.
Mr. Nunez, excuse me, can you please conclude?
The board's support of Garifuna American Heritage Month in the public school system will be the first in the nation and will serve as an example to cities populated, members of the community across the nation. Thank you. And please, if you have any questions, we'll do our best to respond. Attached in the packets is the governor's proclamation and our contact information.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do have a question. I want to ask you a question. There are particular communities that have stronger, that have large numbers of populations that you're referring to. Do we have local communities in Chicago that have high numbers of individuals with a heritage? Or are they really spread? They're really spread?
Spread, spread in Illinois.
Well, really, thank you for bringing this to our attention. You know, recognizing diversity is a critical piece in achieving this unity that we all want to have in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Our next speaker is speaker number 19, Maisha Shields.
My name is Maisha Shields. I'm the proud mom of five awesome scholars at Catalyst Maria Charter Elementary School, whom are in the seventh, fifth, fourth, third and first grade. Since being at Catalyst, my kids came from a public school market. Since being at Catalyst, my girls have done phenomenal. Three of whom are, are disabled. Ooh, I'm nervous. One who is terminally ill, one is blind and, um, one is asthmatic. And since being at Catalyst, my girls have done so well. And my terminally ill one, she's a straight A student and she scored the high scores on NWEA. My severe asthmatic one scored, she's a straight A student also, missing a lot of school. She's oxygen dependent, a straight A student. The blind one, straight A student. So since being at Catalyst, they're all under IEPs. They have amazing teachers who work well with them. Their motto to them is, just because you're disabled, it doesn't mean you're never too disabled to learn. So they, I just came to tell you the amazing things about my charter school and my beautiful five honor roll students and the amazing teachers who I have to recognize. Mr. Olson, Mrs. McCullough and Ms. Anna Campbell, because they are the reason why my students have done well. And that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Shields.
Our next speaker, please, will be speaker number 20, Martin Ritter, followed by speaker 21, Anice Daniels, followed by speaker 22, Grady Jordan, and speaker 23, Yolanda McCoy, please.
Good morning. My name's Martin Ritter. President Vitale, you opened up the meeting with suggestions for nominations for the board members, a student board member. Perhaps the Diet High School seniors who have no extracurricular activities would like to be a student board member. They, as you know, take most of their classes online, have no prom planned, have no homecoming planned, have no staff to support them. Perhaps they would like this extracurricular activity. They take their social studies and civic engagement online. They don't actually have the benefit of interacting with adults on social, social studies and civic engagement. Last night, activists, parents and community members around Diet High School engaged in a nonviolent civil disobedience on the fifth floor of City Hall and chained themselves to the statue of President Washington to gain attention to the cause of the students of Diet High School. They need support. They need the board to honestly interact with them about their proposal for a green technology and global leadership high school. You have a beautiful high school in Washington Park. They would like to have their community's proposal be honored and listened to and accepted as part of your new school or whatever process development you have over this next year. We, we met earlier today, the new incubation and activation manager that you hired, in which he told us that there would be another proposal process and more charter schools. But conveniently, the Diet High School community's proposal for a, for their school to be invested in and supported in is ignored. So please, take some time out of your, your busy schedules, interact and engage with the Diet High School, parents, teachers, community support, elected officials. I believe you live close to that area as well. You know what they're up against. You know what they want. Give them the high school that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. Thank you, Mr. Ritter. Our next speaker, please. Speaker twenty-one, Anice Daniels.
Hello. My name is Anice Daniels. I'm a parent of two and an uncle of nine children that attend Chalmers School of Excellence. I've been a parent volunteer for nineteen years at various schools, Johnson, Herschel, Batum, and now Chalmers. I've been a parent patrol in the Garifuna-Londelle neighborhood. All the years in the school, the biggest transformation I have seen at Chalmers, this is our second year since the turnaround with AUSL. So far, the second year has been great. There's been no suspensions in the first day of school. Attendance went up last, from last year, it went from 94.7% in September 2013 to 96.8% 2014. We have really small classroom sizes. There's an average of 23 students per classroom. We also have city year, foster grandparents, UIC tutors. That means about one adult for every 12, 12 kids. We have beta club to celebrate those who doing their best in school. This year, the school has focused on the smaller group learning. All of our third through eighth grade students are able to be on the iPad to help them learn, to help them to do their best in learning. We have 40 spots for pre-K, for full-day pre-K, which all of them have been full. This year, we are taking our school, we are taking our kids on a field trip to the selective enrollment of school. The first trip is October 18th, to, October 18th, to Jones Commercial, and my son is hoping to go to Whitney Yard. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Grady Jordan, last call. Moving on to speaker twenty-three, please. Yolanda McCoy. Last call for Ms. McCoy. Our last speakers, then, Mr. President, will be the two speakers from Decatur Classical School. The first speaker will be Kristine Bokey-Greven, speaker twenty-six, followed by speaker twenty-five, Jeanette Shar, please.
Good morning. My name's Kristin Bokey-Greven and I'm the chairperson of the Decatur Classical Expansion Committee and the vice chair of the LSC. We wanted to talk to you today to ask you to take action to fix Decatur's biggest challenge, which is the need for a seventh and eighth grade, which is the standard throughout CPS and the preferred K through eight model outlined in CPS's own 10-year master facilities plan. This is becoming more and more of an urgent issue. Because having a school, an elementary school that ends in sixth grade is like having a high school that ends after sophomore year. And the fact that there's no clear path for students after sixth grade at Decatur means they aren't able to continue their classical education at their current pace, and it means that they have four years of intense pressure to perform on high-stakes tests, starting at age 10, when they're in fifth grade, just to get into seventh grade, only to repeat the process again to get into high school. In order to add a seventh and eighth grade, we're asking you to expand our building or move our entire program to another building, specifically Stewart Elementary School, one of the buildings slated to be repurposed. Because our existing space can't accommodate our needs. It was originally designed as a primary grade school only, a starter school from kindergarten through second grade. But today, more than 30 years later, it has nearly 300 kindergarten through sixth graders in the exact same building. A building without a cafeteria, a gym, an auditorium, or any space large enough for students to be together for an assembly or for safety, without space to serve as special needs children, without offices and desks for many of our teachers and staff, and most importantly, without room for a seventh and eighth grade.
Ms. Bokey, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes. We see a fantastic opportunity to reuse Stewart to meet our needs and achieve the objectives outlined in CPS's master plan, and we hope you'll take action. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Speaker twenty-five, Jeanette Shar.
Thank you. My name is Jeanette Shar. I am the chair of the Decatur Classical LSC. There's one more important reason CPS should expand Decatur, because this is a unique opportunity for CPS to add more selective enrollment spots to one of the top elementary schools in the state, a school that is racially and economically diverse with students from all across the city. The paradigm change you can implement by relocating Decatur to Stewart is a wonderful message about the strength of Chicago Public Schools and the education you provide. What better way for the district to stand behind children than to give more opportunities to more students? To use Decatur as a beacon of academic hope and success and to use Stewart and the Uptown community as a place to do it. Adding a seventh and eighth grade, as well as expanding the number of classrooms in other grades, would bring more opportunities for students across the city, keeping more families and more tax dollars here. The demand is great. Last year alone, Decatur had 3,000 applicants for 80 openings. So allow us, allow Decatur to be your partner in success. Too often, parents are pitted against the district, teachers against administration, schools against communities. But that is not the case here. We can be a voice of hope together. The community wants the existing building to be reused as a public school. The Alderman fully supports Decatur as an anchor in his ward. It is his number one priority, and he's committed to working with us and with CPS to find the funding to make this happen.
Ms. Shar?
Yes.
Excuse me. Can you please conclude?
CPS has a solution in your hands right now. It is a win for all of us. Decatur can be, and most assuredly, will be, the rising tide that lifts all boats. It will lift the Decatur community, it will lift the Uptown community, and the CPS community. We urge you to consider moving Decatur Classical School to the now-closed Stewart Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Where do your seventh, your sixth graders go? Where, can you just give us generally where they land?
They really are dispersed throughout the city. As, originally, the academic centers were created as an automatic entry for, for the schools that ended after sixth grade. But as you know, since those seats are getting more and more difficult to come by and the scores keep going, the, the scores keep going up, it's harder to get into. So, so now, I would say a handful go to each one of the selective enrollment academic centers on the north side, since Decatur is located on the far northwest side. A handful of them go to other selective enrollment elementary schools, and many of them go back to a neighborhood school, depending upon, you know, if that's a good option or not.
Thank you.
So to both of you, I thank you for your engagement and frankly, the whole parent community engagement in Decatur Classic. I have visited the school and, you know, your engagement along with the faculty and the principal really make that school a special place. And I assure you, it's on the radar scope of all of us here to try to find the right solution for you. You've raised an important issue that we need to address. You presented one option. We need to find an answer for you. But thank you for coming and making it known to all of us. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that concludes public participation.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.